Administrator Greg Brueg, Deputy Administrator City Attorney Tim Henry, Assistant City Clerk Catherine Payne, Administrator Assistant Lisa San Filippo, Controller Darren Snyder, and all the city department heads assembled here tonight. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on legislation pending before council tonight?
Good evening, Matthew Ford, Posture. I apologize in advance if I go over my time. However, I guarantee this will be the most important discussion we have this evening. I'd like to comment on the resolution affecting the appointment of the new city solicitor, Peter Moses. And I'm curious, I'm going to start with two tiny little facts here. I was curious if anybody on council was aware that Mr. Peter Moses is delinquent on his taxes to the city of Wilkes-Barre in the amount of $1,950.12, or whether anyone on council was aware that Mr. Moses had his law license suspended in 2014 because he did not pay the renewal. And I'm curious if we are comfortable with this individual representing our city and advising us on which actions we have to take. However, the purpose of my visit to the podium this evening is to recant the events that happened on Tuesday at the work session, which by all means are nothing but completely outrageous. At that work session, Mr. Tim Henry, who holds two hats now, both the city attorney and also a member above the administration, informed council of their legal options and also advocated for administrative, I'm sorry, the position of the administration in a direct conflict of interest with his duties as city attorney. He furthermore neglected to inform council of all their options under the city charter and completely misled them about what the city charter said. He informed council correctly that under Section 3.09 provisions against city council that neither council nor any members shall in any manner dictate, important word, the appointment or removal of any city administrative officers or employees whom the mayor or his subordinates are empowered to appoint. What he neglected to tell council was about Section 3.11, removal powers. Council shall have the power to remove from office or cause set forth in this section any person appointed to the office by council or with the advice and consent of council. He furthermore neglected to tell council about Section 5.07, powers and duties of the mayor, and 5.08 appointments by the mayor, which states that the mayor shall appoint with the advice and consent of council. This is the exact same parliamentary procedure that governs our United States. It's the same procedure that the president used to appoint Supreme Courts and other cabinet positions. That consent of council is absolutely required. And Mr. Henry, in a direct conflict of interest, promoted the administration, promoted the individual that they were putting up for the position. And he should have excused himself and informed council of his conflict of interest. Now, I ask council today not only to vote no for this resolution, but also that Mr. Henry should not be advising council because, once again, he works for the administration now. There's a direct conflict of interest and he is not able to advise council of anything regarding the administration's appointments. Furthermore, I have drafted up an official complaint about Mr. Henry's actions, which have been reported in the newspapers, for an official complaint form, which is to be presented to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court Disciplinary Board. And I recommend that council goes ahead and moves forward with that as well, because absolutely appalling. Furthermore, council needs to basically acquire independent legal counsel. I am not a lawyer, I can't tell you what to do. But he also cannot tell you what to do. And what he's doing is criminal right now. And we need an independent counsel to advise this city council of their legal opinions.
Are you complete?
I am complete, sir.
Yeah, obviously, I disagree with everything he said. In no way am I necessarily discounting this counsel.
Mr. Henry, again, you're in a conflict of interest, sir.
And, you know, if he's going to be filing complaints against us, I'll certainly respond at the appropriate time. But I completely disagree with what he said this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Ted, on the resolution, there was this gentleman, this detail. I just questioned the need for, I kept reading through this up during the previous administration several times, and we have at least two solicitors. So we also have, as I understand it from Mr. Ryan's information, a solicitor for pension fund as well. We have a pension fund council. And we also have the city, I mean, when I say we, there's also a, you know, a bond council. And I guess it's only done when the city borrows money, which is quite a bit. No, I just questioned the need, and I wonder if Mr. Moses, if it's, I have nothing against Mr. Moses personally, I don't know his qualifications, it's, but I questioned the need for a second attorney, whether Mr. Henry couldn't fulfill, I mean, is there that much of a caseload or workload that we, that you actually need? Couldn't that, for instance, a paralegal, about one-third the cost of being hired instead of Mr. Moses? Is that a possibility, or is it because of this person's high level of expertise that he seems to be so essential for $52,000? And I'd like to know if anybody has the answer along the lines of that, $52,000 that he's going to be making. Is he required to put a certain number of hours? I'd love to have that position, boy, I'll tell you. I mean, I guess I feel guilty, though, you know, ripping off, let's say ripping off, taking advantage. Is he required to put a certain number of hours when you're Mr. Henry? Does he have a required caseload? Does he have to show up in city hall for, like, let's say, five hours? Because he has his own, he's going to maintain his own practice, correct? Does he even require to sit in his office here at the city for five hours or 10 hours a week? Or is it just like when he feels like coming, when there is a caseload? I'd like to know that information, because if the situation, if he has that kind of liberty, if he's at liberty to just show up whenever he feels like it, I think the appointment's basically unnecessary, with no offense to him personally. I'd also like to know, this is also for the resolution, right? Jim? Regarding the resolution, I think this, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the consent agenda. This coverage with the Safety National Academy Corporation, $96,000. I trust the mayor's discretion here, you know, along with his predecessors. But I just wondered how this figure was arrived at, whether this had to be put out for bid, since it is excess workers' comp coverage. Was it required to be put out for bid? If it was, was this particular company the lowest bidder? I assume it was. Because everything, you know, he's only been in office a week, and I don't know how this, everything's happening so quickly here, I just wondered about that. And then, that's basically all I have. I just, you know, was wondering about those two things. Somebody can answer me, that would be appreciated.
Well, yeah, related to the second solicitor, the assistant city solicitor, there, we have a lot of work, and we do need two attorneys. Mr. Moses won't have sit hours, but I can guarantee you he will be a very busy man once he's the assistant city solicitor, just like Bill Vinscoe was.
So he'll be here consistently? I mean, in city hall?
He will be working on city business consistently, yes.
But he's able to keep his own practice?
Yeah, like his predecessors, yes.
There's no required number of hours, though?
There's no sit required number, but again, he's going to be spending a lot of time on city business.
He needs to do the work in his own office, though, correct? He doesn't have to do it here.
Correct, correct.
That's par for the course? I mean, that's the way it's been done? The previous administration, with you and Mr. Vinscoe? And then we're going to stop back and forth to go ahead?
Yeah, as long as the work's getting done. You know, it doesn't matter if it's getting done here or at his office, as long as it's done. That's important here.
Mr. Wilson, the R. or the Joyce?
Joyce Insurance is the broker for the city. Excess workers' comp, the city's self-insured. So the city is self-insured for workers' comp? So we are required to have excess workers' comp insurance?
Oh, I understand that, I just wondered how this...
So Joyce Insurance is the city's broker. They go out and get the best price for the city.
So the city can do it directly?
No, we never have, probably never will. That's not our area of expertise. It's not, that's why we hire Joyce Insurance. Joyce Insurance is the city's broker.
So the price should be agreeable to everybody. Okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else on pending what you say, Mr. Ford?
Good evening, Frank Sork, Wall Street, Wilkes-Barre. I also am urging council to vote no. Not that it will make a difference. I believe the mayor's appointment will hold whether or not council approves or disapproves of this appointment. But I'm asking the council to please vote no on the appointment of Peter Moses for several reasons, as stated by Mr. Ford. Also, I'm wondering, is this the same attorney Moses that represented LAG during his confirmation, who stated before council that nothing would change, the prices would not increase, that everything would remain the same as far as public impact from the towing contract? That Peter Moses testified in front of Wilkes-Barre City Council swearing that prices would not go. We've seen the price gouging by LAG. If this is the type of morals our new mayor is already representing, my God, council needs to send a strong message and just vote no. Distance yourself from this. And again, if the mayor wants to push this through anyway, that will be on him. But I'm urging council to vote no on that. As for the consent agenda, I would agree that we do need the workers' comp insurance. However, I would recommend that this be put out to bid to other agencies and not consistently go with the Joyce Agency, as they have consistently funded both the previous mayor and now current mayor's campaign fund. I just think the city should look, if Joyce is the cheapest, then stay with them. But if they're not, let's at least put it out for a bit. Let's not just say blindly, well, Joyce gave us this because, you know, that's who we've always chosen. We've always chosen them because that's who they always donate to. I mean, let's be real about it. Thank you.
I have a question. On this particular Joyce issue, is that a professional service that you just think from that, or does she have its love in the future?
I believe it's a professional service, I'm happy to give it to that faculty.
Do that? Anyone else on pending what you're suggesting?
Okay, first, the appointment for Peter John Moses as assistant city attorney for the city of Wilkes-Barre. That is for a vote by council separately, it's not on consent agenda. Motion second, and vote is needed for that. A motion on the floor?
No motion.
Okay, the resolution fails for lack of a motion.
Good job.
And regarding the consent agenda resolutions, Resolution Number Two, relative to the sale of a vacant small piece of property in the rear of Sheridan Street, is being pulled from the agenda and will not be on the consent agenda for a vote. So that leaves two items for the consent agenda. Motion second, and vote is needed for that. Mr.?
Mayor?
Beth?
Is there a language?
Let me tell them. Okay, Mr. Veluska?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
And Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda ordinances. Just one item, subject to final reading. Motion second and vote.
Mr. Barrett?
Second.
I'll say.
Mike and Mike. Okay, Mr. Veluska?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
And Mr. Barrett? Motion passes. And that's it for the formal business to council. Ms. Gilbert, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I received a complaint regarding large lane, not the cloud or salted pressure who went here contest to that, but just something to keep in mind for next November. Also, I also received a complaint regarding the lines on, I also received a complaint regarding the lines on Wilster Boulevard between East Southampton Street and Hazel Street. Obviously, I know that we can't paint them now, but I think that that should definitely be a priority when we are able to repaint the lines on the road when the weather breaks. I mean, they're just non-existent at this point, so I think that'd be helpful. That's all.
Mr. Brueg, I'm a bit concerned about the lines. I know that we applied towards off the grant, the lines and signs. Can you hear anything back on that?
No. So still, when did you hear back on that grant?
It was in March.
It was in March?
Should be so.
I'll keep on that one, I'd be great.
I might add here also that we do have a plan that we better bid, hopefully using the refuel line in certain areas regardless of the name. But either be straight.
It's a safety issue, straight.
Thank you. Mr. Veluska?
I have nothing, sir.
Mr. Brooks?
I just want to say it's been a remarkable 10 days already. And I'm pleased with the discussion that is happening actually citywide. If you're on Facebook, we're 2,000 people, but really 40-some thousand people that we'll have conversations with. The point I just want to bring up is what happened tonight, I think we really need to look at our city charter and see what has teeth, what needs to be in it, what has to be out of it, what could be amended, as well as every ordinance. So I look forward to working with you, Tim, and going through all that stuff. Last night was a wonderful resident association meeting in Roanoke Hill, and a couple constituents came up with a list of vacant houses. And I will pass that on to the administration. And I also just want to say that everyone who I've met and talked with already over the first week have been extremely welcoming and accommodating. There's a great coagulality, I feel, amongst the council members and the mayor. And I appreciate him reaching out, giving phone calls today too about subjects in this city. And I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
One thing that I have, and I don't know if there's been some communication, how many on this, I saw their announcement on the foundation system that they're working to implement. They're short, but I don't know if we've had any conversation with them. But if we haven't, I would encourage that we sit closely at that.
Sure, yeah, we were in discussions with them close to two years ago. But they all stalled because they were waiting for this new program to take place. Now that it was picked up in the press and now that we know it's happening, we'll have our, the rate department reach out to them.
I know they want to...
It's something easy for us to join, yeah.
It'd be a great service for our residents, especially those that are in areas like from the flooding and other types of situations that we all have.
Mike, did I miss you?
I'm pretty happy.
I just have one question for Greg. Greg, just want to see if you got any direction on where a point of contact is for our issues.
During the week, they are going to be going through Carol Smith at the helpline. You can email Carol Smith or call her.
So, Mr. Brooks, are you saying we're going to go to helpline?
Carol Smith is going to be the initial contact for the time being.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. That's it for me.
Mr. Barrett?
Oh, I wanted to commend Mr. Harris for looking into the situation in East Den around the back of school. He shared with me draft plan that he has, and that he will be presenting to the traffic committee to help address some of those concerns that are quickly arising in that area. And if I can help with you on that in any way, I'm very familiar with that particular area right under, I'd like to get involved with that. So thank you for taking the lead.
Thank you, Mr. Chad.
I apologize to Mr. Merritt for skipping over this.
No need.
Okay, public discussion. Mr. Ford, you had a, you were listed, but I didn't know if you were...
Yes, sir, I have something additional. You do? Okay, come on up. Matthew Ford, Posture. I'd like to submit a picture for council, if I may. This picture that is going about was posted on Facebook and then quickly removed by one Miss Charlotte Rock. The title is "How About Me: Sitting in Mayor George's Chair at City Hall. Many exciting things happening, stay tuned for more." Stay tuned indeed. It has recently come to my intention that our newly appointed chief of police officer, Lindaki, was the one who is hemorrhaging city business through the Wilkes-Barre, I'm sorry, Wake Up Wilkes-Barre blog, especially regarding ongoing investigations, confidential information. And this has been confirmed to me by the editor of that blog, Frank Sork, who said he is willing to testify to that fact, and that those leaks were funneled through Miss Rock. I have evidence of Mr. Sork providing me with that information here. And it's also been brought to my attention that the leaks immediately stopped when Miss Lindaki was on disability leave. I find this absolutely outrageous, that this person would, after not being able to contain leaks and stories when she was a member of the department, is now in charge and will be, obviously, all important police business will be going through. And I question what leaks will have there. Now, I'd like to go back to the city charter and under, because again, you shouldn't just take my word for it, which is why I asked council, under Section 3.10 of the city charter, investigations, council shall have the power by ordinance to make or cause to be made investigations, audits, or studies of the affairs of the city and the conduct of any city department, office, or agency, and for this purpose, may retain professional and technical assistance, subpoena witnesses, administer oaths, take testimony, require the production of evidence, and provide funds for such investigations, audit, or study. The subject of such investigation, audit, or study shall specifically be stated in the authorizing ordinance, and the final report shall be submitted to council at public meeting. So again, don't take my word for it. I ask council to create an investigation to subpoena Mr. Sork, who's here tonight and would be much willing to testify, Miss Lindaki, and Miss Rock about their conduct, as well as any and all emails correspondence between Miss Lindaki and Miss Rock to attest whether or not any leaks actually did take place, because if they did not, then that means to be made sure that her name is clear of this matter. However, I don't think that's the case, and I do believe these, and it's very troubling to me. So I have five questions. Mr. Veluska, is it troubling to you? Mr. Brooks, is it troubling to you? Mr. Barrett, is it troubling to you? Ms. Gilbert, is it troubling to you? And Mr. Merritt, is it troubling to you if, in fact, these allegations are true?
Are you finished? I'm finished, sir. Anyone care to comment?
I'll comment. I mean, obviously, if this is true, it is troubling. Whether we should subpoena someone now, I don't know if that's appropriate at this time. I don't know how the rest of council feels about this. If anybody else cares to comment about your feelings towards it, if it is a serious issue, it should be addressed. I don't know if it should be addressed at this meeting, but in the near future, maybe. If anybody else cares to comment.
The administration chair? Mr. Ford, on your presentation, what you just spoke about is obviously not very specific. If you do have specific information, I'm sure council would like to hear that at some point. So if you wanted to get that to council, feel free to communicate that. Probably be a better way of doing it rather than this particular foreign area.
And a response, Sir Barrett? Of course, ideally, that would be the case. However, unfortunately, I'm not a law enforcement officer nor prosecutor, and I do not have the ability to subpoena witnesses, launch investigations, and demand evidence. Council, however, does have that ability. And once again, I am asking council to retain independent legal counsel on this matter to find out and get to the bottom of this. If the editor of the blog is saying that this is our source, that is pretty reliable information, and again, should be handled as such.
Again, you are correct. We do have that power, we do have that authority, so just agree with that. However, we would need more specific information, just alluded to, from another source, so...
We should be willing to ask Mr. Sork to testify tonight.
Mr. Sork is free to speak tonight, but again, this is not interrogatory.
Well, if he didn't submit a form, he would no longer be free to speak, sir.
He did, I believe. I believe he did submit a form.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Giraud? You know how you say it's a hard act to follow? That is. You know, but thank you. Mr. Giraud, 47 Minor Street. I want to thank the new city council members. The oldest gentleman known here, Dr. Mr. Bill Battle, there were seven people here, and at the time of the city council, I was the only individual in here. So it does my heart good to see the city council and the city workers behind you. And behind me, there's more than just me. I would address, as we move on, and I'm glad that we have young city council, Beth, I want to thank you for bringing the city council to 21st century on Facebook. It's amazing what you're doing, reaching out to people. I hope the other city council people, they will follow suit. I reformed the city council under the last administration, in a group of people that met with Greg Brueg and the last chief of police about working with issues about cultural and diversity training. And this was brought upon because of continuous complaints about people in the community about sometimes police officers being aggressive. And this is true because of the lawsuits that I know personally that are coming down. So we discussed on how can we work this? And we came to an arrangement, and I hope that we continue this, that when police officers before or after roll call would spend time with people in the community, with expert chiefs, with cultural diversity, and spend time with the officers and get to know them. Later on, there was a discussion, there was a grant with Lakeview Community College and Wilkes University, with grant money that would cost us nothing, and would be a, some kind of project that would cost anything to see if diversity training someday will work with police officers. I hope that we continue that, as Greg Brueg was on the ground floor. I think it's much needed. Also, the last administration, it was also discussed, and I think the city and the police need some kind of committee working together. It's proven fact that if you're a major city, when you have police and community leaders and people sitting down, we can prevent a lot of situations before they got up hand. Don't think just as Baltimore and major cities have quieted down, that stills and that continues to be a problem. I will tell you this, those who made that mistake, those are people where Sherman Hills many, many years ago became a trouble spot, because many elected officials and people letting go, no one was talking. You see the difference now? Oh, no shooting, guess what? You know why? People actually went up there and started talking to individuals. People got involved. And it needs to be, and that has to be done. I think city council members, I wish, I don't know how many of you take any cultural diversity training. Many of you have never entered in Sherman Hills. Many of you have never entered into a bi-church. Many of you have never entered Latino churches. This is a growing community. And I tell you this because as we grow, the challenges continue to grow. And I go to places where you do not go. I go to places you do not, you don't dare go. So I tell you, a community that works together is a better community. So again, I want the city council to adopt some of these ideas we've had. To have some kind of task force, work the city council and the police to make sure we're working hand in hand. This is an election year, and already that people are ready for office and using races as a tool. If you do not think that affects the people in the community, you're greatly mistaken. Let's move on to some issue. Monday will be Martin Luther King Day. And once again, because of the city's not moving, and I will also say I'll take responsibility. I think too many people in the community wait at the wrong time to address Martin Luther King. They waited a couple of weeks or months before. Let's start discussions now. We do not need this continued to divide our community. It has to be an open discussion. And I also would behoove the mayor. Last time when we discussed Martin Luther King, he addressed to me, and Mr. Simpleton, there's two people involved who want this. Do not make the mistake, this is not just a certain group of people who want this. It's a community effort. We just happen to be the spokespeople for it. But please address the city council aggressively. Let's start now. Because if we wind up at the end of the year in the same situation we are now, I will hold you responsible. Because already it's divided my community. Well, Monday should be a day that my city comes together, once again, it's been divided, because this is not taken seriously. And I blame this on myself. So you have my word, I will be addressing this as often as I can, because once again, you don't have to deal with the aftermath. The people in the community, people who love the civil rights. So please, city council, make this as important as any agenda you face. If you do not think this is a very serious issue for this community that we face, I get to be wrong, ladies and gentlemen. We better start working more closely together. Welcome and thank you once again.
Mr. Jim Walsh.
Yes, sir. Jim Walsh, Wilkes-Barre City. My hearing's not the best, so you'll have to talk loud if I have to respond, so... Let's lighten things up a little bit, and then we'll get serious, all right? What does a dog say when he slid on the sandpaper? Rock. Why did a chicken cross the street? Most of you know the answer, don't you? Because he wanted to. People tell me I have a kind face. Funny kind. The only place I get out of life is looking in the mirror. Did you ever notice times when you're talking, you stop because you forgot what you were going to say? You know what that's called? A metal fork. Do you think I'm too good looking for my height? No, let's get serious. Mayor George isn't here, but I have members of council. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate the new members. And with each and every one of you here, a Happy New Year. In my remarks, I'm going to offer a number of suggestions that I ask you to take into serious consideration. Mayor George is not here. But I'm going to strongly suggest you remove the desecrated American flag from the mayor's office and replace it with the truly unblemished American flag. Our nation's flag in its natural form creates all the honor necessary for any and all occasions. You don't dishonor our flag and then believe you're creating humor, or honor rather. It's shameful. Yes, we mourn the loss of lives in the terrorist attack on 9/11, as we do all Americans throughout our history. As one who has attended many council meetings over the past several years, I consider them nothing more than a sham. Little, if anything, is accomplished. First, I strongly suggest the time period of five minutes allotted to the citizens dressing council be raised to seven minutes. Further, they not be restricted from asking to mayor or single council members questions. To this, to me, this is a violation of our right to freedom of speech. Citizens be allowed the option of seating before council or standing at the podium. This, too, is a freedom denied we, the people, and should be given the option. County council meetings use a podium. Why should the city? Each member of council be requested to report of actions they have taken in respect to their districts. Rarely are there any reports given by members of council. Is there nothing going on in their district? If not, why so much crime and fear? Mr. Merritt stated to me at the last meeting, he receives about 70 phone calls a year. He did not offer any information regarding the city and his job as councilman relating to the phone calls. To me, that was insulting. Seventy phone calls, but didn't reveal any information regarding the phone calls. As I have observed through the years by council members and mayor, their reluctance to answer questions is typical political inaction. By not saying anything to questions, it protects them of being accused of something because they did nothing in their mouth. But boy, just a citizen says something if it's uncomfortable for them, then they jump in and interrupt you, gavel you down to quiet the person speaking. You can't deny it because I've had it happen to me multiple times. I've been told questions I'd ask, they would not be answered, or after my five minutes were up, then the questions would not be answered. Multiple times, I've witnessed other citizens have questions answered and mutual discussions on the particular subject. And exceeding the time members, why the injustice? I've provided each of you with a list of former business establishments that have disappeared from Central City over a period of years. Just think of the lost revenue and taxes as a result of the losses. I listed 67 businesses that have left Central City in the last, in the recent years. Don't try and blame it on the flood of 1972. Most of the businesses came back after the flood.
Mr. Walsh, you're going to need to finish your presentation.
What's that?
You're going to need to finish your presentation. You are out of time. Go ahead and finish up.
Will you allow me to continue?
Just another second.
Each council member should make a personal survey recording the blighted properties, streets, safety concerns, and then investigate through the tax office or other legal means as to the status of those questionable properties and businesses. If I keep my home clean and neat, why should I see my home devalued because of blighted or unsafe neighbors? Start finding these landlords until conditions are corrected.
I'm going to stop you right there.
Why should we be, the citizens, be doing their responsibilities?
Mr. Walsh. Comments on that?
Just one comment that I made about me. And 70 calls a year, I wish I had 70 calls a year.
Excuse me, would you speak to us here instead of them? We're the citizens who want to hear what you have to say.
Sure thing, Mr. Walsh. Could you hear me now?
Not too well, because my hearing's not that good, but go ahead.
I said to Mr. Barrett, you pointed out that I told you that I get 70 phone calls a year per city council business. It's more than that a month.
But you didn't relay any information. You didn't reveal anything?
Let it finish.
That's one thing that makes you receive, saying, but you didn't provide anything regarding those phone calls.
Mr. Walsh, how it works is I get the phone calls, and I take those problems to the members of the administration and have them work on them and get them fixed. That's it.
Mr. Walsh, in answer to your 67 businesses that you have listed, it was a very comprehensive list. I give you a lot of credit for compiling that. But in looking at it, a lot of those businesses, when that business 40 years ago were longer, loud as riffs, and a lot of younger people are going to remember a lot of these places. But on the other hand, your list doesn't include the number of businesses that have started in Wilkes-Barre. And we certainly just, I just saw one in the paper today of a salon that's opening on South Franklin Street. Numerous other businesses that are continuously developing. If you want to get a comprehensive list of that, you can probably check with Mr. Newman. And Mr. Larry Newman would provide you with the list of all of the businesses. All you really have to do is look out the window here and see that there are very few vacant storefronts, and there are more to come. But I do appreciate your efforts, and it is something that we like to see. We like to see businesses continue to come into Wilkes-Barre. Unfortunately, some businesses do leave over the years for one reason or another, what business is. But thank you for that list, and we'll look it over. Lemon?
I mean, you mentioned about the podium and the desk. Is that something we can accommodate for? Is there a reason why we sit down?
We could talk about that.
And then, Mr. Walsh, God bless you. I love that you come here and come here all the time. I will promise you that I work for what I do, what I meet, on a monthly basis. I don't do it in the neighborhood, and I'll do it here at council chambers as well.
As I provided photographs, documented information regarding blighted properties in the city.
Any other comments from council? Okay. All right, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you. Very informative. Patricia Reed?
Good evening. Patricia Reed, Dunheer Elizabeth Street. I'm coming before the council because of South Main Street Plaza and the parking that's around there. And the lack of ADA parking. There's a lot of new businesses that have came up around South Main Plaza. They only have one handicap parking space, and that's near where the liquor store is at. And that's it. With all the rest of the space, it has to be at least 90, 80, 90 spaces. Besides that, there is none, even if you do park and find a place to park, there's no curb cuts to get on the sidewalk for any of the stores that's there. You would have, it's a very dangerous situation, I know personally, because me and my daughter have went and tried that, and she's in a chair. So trying to get from the parking space, we would have to go all the way where the liquor store is. And that's the only curb cut that's there to get on the sidewalk. The only one. And the only handicap parking space that's there. So I wonder if someone could look into that? Because I feel that that's, that it should be more handicap spaces. Because the ratio to the number of spaces to handicap spaces, it's ridiculous. And it's also a safety issue. There should be some more curb cuts to get on the sidewalk.
As you know, South Main Plaza is privately owned. There are ADA regulations that dictate the number of spaces that you must have or in a ratio. You're correct. And other access issues. Could we reach out to the owners and just let them know that there is a concern about that? And see if they are planning on addressing that? We don't own that, so we just can't, when he creates those spaces there. But what you're saying is true, which I'm sure it is, and it sounds like there is a, maybe a possible issue. Mr. Bruegge will let them know that you've made a concern about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnson-Hosky? How do you pronounce your name? I'm sorry, Ms. Penosa.
Everybody knows. Johnson-Hosky, Allman Lane. Just I want to go back to where you were going with Martin Luther King Day. It's kind of embarrassing that that's not recognized holiday by the city. Like, whenever I tell friends that are from here that, and they hear that, it kind of gets a weird look from people. So, I don't know, you guys should probably fix that, and sooner better than later, because it just, it doesn't look good. Doesn't look good to anybody that's coming in. It's kind of just embarrassing. I'd just like, I have a question about the pond in Kirby Park now. The pump that cleans out the algae in there. What would that be costing to get fixed? Because it hasn't, it looks like the pond's been, like the algae hasn't been cleaned through that pond. And I'd also like to know, if there's a way, like Mr. Brooks was saying, not changing things in the charter, we could go back to the old way of electing council people where we're not no more districts and just an open vote. Because I think that splitting people up by district by district is, it separates, like, you only elect a councilperson, and then you're that person's councilman. If you're a councilperson, you should be everybody's councilperson. It shouldn't just be like, I represent this area, and this is what I'm worried about. I just think that if you guys are elected, everybody, you should be covering the whole city. It shouldn't be just one person for a little bit of part of the city. Somebody might, everybody should be responsible for the whole city. I like, and that's all I have. I just like to really, you guys change something about Martin Luther King Day. You guys need to handle that.
Which one are you? Pond? Is there a problem there? I don't, it'll later though. There is a circulated pump that has failed. It lasted a couple of years. It's an inexpensive fix. I'm sure it'll do it, but we'll probably wait until the springtime and we can get at it and access it easily.
How much do you think it's going to cost to get fixed?
It's just a couple hundred bucks.
Okay.
Your last comment on council and the charter and everything, that, as you know, you're obviously first in this. This is probably about eight years now, we would imagine, that this has been in place, the current system, when we went from seven council members at large to five by district. There are benefits either way in my eyes, but if, it's not something, it could have, it could change back if the electors decided they wanted it that way.
I'd like to see that put on referendum. Yeah, I'd like to see if we can put that back on referendum. I just think that everybody should be worried about the whole city. Like, and certain people, it shouldn't take two, like, maybe 600 votes to be a councilperson. It should take a few thousand, same thing as the mayor. You guys should have to get votes from every part of the city, not just where somebody lives. Everybody should have to get votes from every part of the city. Because everybody out there represents the whole city.
John, we do represent everybody in the city.
I understand that, but I think that...
We are districtized for, the reason I believe is, you can ideally have seven council members living on Blackman Street. Now, will they want to represent the whole city, or they won't want to worry about Blackman Street? By being spread out throughout the city, you're responsible for one part of the area, I'm responsible for another, and so on and so on. We represent the whole city, but our district people come to us individually. We bring their issues to the administration. It's easier that way, instead of just being, well, if you can ideally get seven people from one street, and that's just not right for the rest of the city. By districtizing, there's a council member spread out throughout the whole city.
But on the flip side of that, you could have, you could get, know that you have so many votes and not even care about a part of your district, and just be like, oh, well, that part, that don't really matter to me because I already know I have everybody in this area. So it could work either way.
And Mr. Sahaski, we could go back and forth in this, all evening. Certainly, there are two sides to this, but you know how it works.
Yep.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question regarding Martin Luther King Day. How involved is council regarding the negotiations for the holidays?
Mr. Bruegge, you could probably have a little further to work on with that.
It is contract negotiations with the unions. I know Mayor George has commented already that he is planning on working with the NAACP and Angel as well as with the unions, and it's going to be a priority to make it occur next year. There are contracts that are up at the end of this year, so those negotiations will begin soon.
So are we directly involved in the negotiations, or do we just vote on it essentially?
Neither.
Well, we vote on the holiday schedule.
You vote on the holiday schedule? That was the first vote. So it's a holiday schedule based on the unions' negotiations.
Mr. Katalowski?
Kurt, do you want to agree to those questions? I'm Bob Katalowski. I'll be short. One thing I want to bring to the council's attention is I noticed that King's College is going to be renting, it's going to be a commercial restaurant installed in their tax-free building over on the square. And I think we should look into pulling tech's exemption certificate on them. If they're going to be making a profit, because I have to pay my taxes, and they're going to have a build, a commercial operation in there. I think their tax exempt status on that building should be pulled. And I think you should also look into, I can believe they have a restaurant going up on North Main Street where the general public could go in too. So if you were, if you had, like, say Barrett's Restaurant, how are you supposed to compare with them? And they don't have to pay, and that building is tax-free. But yet, King's College is over there, it's tax-free, and now they're going to be making a profit. Another thing I wanted to bring up about the city attorney situation. I don't know what you're going to do about it. I have let them personally against Pete Moses. I don't care what you really do. The other thing is, is the city attorney's office, the last 12 years, operated with two city attorneys and one branch, Tim Henry's. Because Tim Henry's the guy that's there probably 50, 60 hours a week. There's always Tim Henry at the meetings, and while Mr. Vinsco was out, going to other towns representing them, he wasn't here, couldn't make it to these meetings, and Tim Henry would get stuck. But I think what you should do, to make a recommendation to this, to the new mayor, is to say, no, we want a full-time assistant city solicitor. There are tons of attorneys out there that would love to have a position, start $70,000 a year. You figure with the benefits? That's a lot of money. And what's going to happen here is, if he gets that, who's going to be doing the work? Another thing is, he is a top... Another thing is, he is a top-notch criminal defense attorney. When you're defending someone, it may take you weeks, weeks of non-stop work to prepare cases for court. We need a full-time solicitor here, especially now that Tim is gonna be babysitting Mr. Baruch. And that's just my opinion. He's not gonna have the time like he used to. And I'm sure Tim's gonna do a good job on that because he's been doing it for the last several years anyway, basically being the administrator. But I think what the council should do is recommend to the new mayor, put a full-time solicitor here. Also, the thing that I called Carol Smith and complained about Carol Smith. Why, why are we paying someone another? Add her benefits up seventy thousand dollars a year. I called Lily Tomlin's agent, she'll come in, one ring-a-ding, two ring-a-ding, three ring-a-ding. You could get her, she's retired. She'll work for a fraction of the salary. Why are we paying somebody seventy thousand dollars a year? We have police officers, we have other people on workers' comp or on light, if we could get them off that and put them on light duty, you're paying them anyway, why not let them come in and answer the phone? This is another political plonja that's being handed out. I just can't believe what I've seen the last fourteen days or ten days, whatever it is. It's just, it's ridiculous. So that's, that's how I feel. And I really think, this is like, you know, council people, you have three votes here. Watch what went on under Mr. Barrett's leadership and Mr. Barrett's leadership. People drug out of here with chairs, me drug out of here by the police. You just have the right to change these rules. Because sometimes when you're trying to explain a situation, it's gonna take a little bit longer. And what Mr. Barrett made a real important comment a few years ago. Are we gonna be here all freaking night? Yeah. If it takes all freaking night, we're gonna be here. Because there's citizens that come in and really try to make valid points. You just have the three votes. Ask Mr. Henry. Yous can extend the time. What's the difference if we give the citizens, it used to be ten, it was ten minutes for as long as I can remember. And that's how you lose your freedoms, just a little bit at a time. Your liberty goes one slice at a time. Like the school board did it, cut it from three, or five minutes to three, now they're back up to five. Yous could change the rules. And there should be dialogue to go back and forth with council people. Like Mr. Walsh, he was given extra time. Certain people are given extra time, other people are thrown out of here. What's the big deal? Everybody's getting paid, so what's the big deal if we extend the time? And have it so we can ask a couple of questions back and forth. I mean, where's everybody going? I mean, you want to go leave here, you're gonna be lucky you don't get killed on the way home with all the bullets flying around the city. But a lot of people come in here and try to make a point and they're cut off. And you just wonder, if you ever see the way I act, yeah, I do get out of hand sometimes. But why? What point am I trying to make? I've never lied to any law enforcement officer. There's multiple investigations going on. Never lied off the front, any federal jury, state jury, anybody. I've never lied. And that's the problem. You try to make points here and you get thrown out. Other people are allowed to talk. You just have the three votes. You could extend the time for the citizens to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Katalowski.
And one other thing, can you see if you could get a water cooler, like, in the general area? Because there's no water room right now.
Anyone care to comment? I just don't remember making that comment and talking about it.
I heard, well, I heard you say.
I'm sure Mr. Riley would have that directed forward here. Okay, thank you.
He's gonna do anything about, say, or make a recommendation to the mayor about having a full-time solicitor and seeing as we can get somebody to, and, see here, you're.
I'll be conveyed to the mayor, Mr. Rupa.
All right, just, he gave him extra time to, although I'm saying his wife.
We did give him extra time too.
All right, okay, well, let me finish. Want it?
You did.
I did finish.
You did.
I didn't.
You did. Ran out of time. I let you go a little longer. Go ahead, quick.
All right, real quick. Write a letter saying, look, why do we have to have Carol Smith? And I like Carol, don't get me wrong, she's nicely. But the thing is, why are we paying somebody almost seventy thousand dollars a year?
Mr. Katalowski, you're being, you already.
I understand, but I'm trying to make my point. Sometimes you gotta drill it into somebody's head.
You made your point. Thank you. Frank Swart?
We don't want to be here all freaking night. I want to tell you right now, we don't want to be here all freaking night. Hurry up, get going. Fix some speed.
Good evening again. Frank Swart, Waller Street. All right, to reiterate on what a few people before me said, I've often said, stated that this table here needs to be back up there or somewhere. I mean, we're crowding people here. As I try to get in, I'm a rather large guy, I'll admit that. As I'm trying to get in, I'm crowding the people behind me. Council chambers is not that big. We do have a rather large crowd here this evening. So we do need to work on this. If it could be moved back up or allow people to stand at the podium and not hear, that would be great. Also, my name was brought up by Mr. Matthew Ford and everything that he said is one hundred percent accurate. I received many calls from our crime watch president and stated that the source we were reporting for Wake Up Wilkes-Barre was, at that time, Lieutenant Lindaki. So again, everything Mr. Ford stated is true. I would be willing to take a lie detector test, lie detector test, asking that Lindaki and Charlotte Rock also take the same test and ask those questions. Did you, did you relay this information to the crime watch president or did the crime watch president tell you it was via Lindaki? Because again, I have no problem taking that lie detector test and would ask that both of them join me in that. So, you know, I mean, I, I don't know. But again, I just wanted to confirm what Mr. Ford had said was one hundred percent accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have you stated our name, Bill?
Please, again.
Sam Troy. One of the things that has distinguished, one of the things that has characterized the last twelve years, with Mayor Layton at the helm, I think, I think most of us in this room, and, well, I don't know about you people on council, I know the way Mr. Mayor and Mr. Barrett feel, for instance. I think the last twelve years have been an unmitigated disaster for the average citizen, the average taxpayer of this city. And I hope a new day is dawning for this city. Because if it's not, things are gonna get progressively worse. Now, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Barrett, I have nothing against you guys personally. You've been on this council for at least eight years. And correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys, as far as I'm concerned, voted with, whatever Mr. Layton's agenda was, you voted for it, including all the reckless spending projects, the budgets, the tax increases, all the increased hardship, as I see it, that we taxpayers now face, you guys were complicit in it. I hope the three new people might see things through this lens that I'm looking through and perhaps get this city on the road to change. Ms. Gilbert, for instance, it's not sour grace, by the way, but I did see her campaign signs and there was some kind of commitment there. It seemed like an abstraction to progress. You had some kind of, I don't remember the exact wording, but you were committed to the city's progress. I'd like to know, maybe for you and the other two new people on council, what your priorities, what your commitments are, if you could spend a couple of minutes after I'm done telling us, in terms of putting this city on the right track. Maybe you have to ask yourselves, how is this city not on the right track? Well, let's look at things the way they are. And what's happened in the last twelve years. And Mr. Sorek, who's an expert in facts regarding the city, has borne this out. The city is now eighty million dollars in debt. Mr. George, needless to say, has his work cut off. You people have your work cut off for you to get this city out of that crushing burden of debt. And by the same token, I think we have to recognize that the taxpayers have had enough. Our taxes have gone up in the last eight, twelve years, I don't know, approximately eighty percent. But there's some people who disagree with that figure, maybe it's even more than that. The wage tax still sits at three percent. Now, its true unemployment has taken somewhat of a dip in this area. It's still an economic, it's still, this area is still characterized by economic hardship. People are still struggling despite the fact that more people are working. An overall picture here, I think, an overall objective that, especially you three, I'm sorry, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Mayor, I don't have too much faith in you guys. I hope you'll prove me wrong. But I think an overall objective, an overall priority that has to be done, regardless of what fiscal path, well, I guess we're gonna be on this budget that was passed under Layton's terms, which did not contain a tax increase, thank God, but did lead the city in a hard way, in a very difficult way to pay its debts. The first priority, as I see it, is to cut reckless spending. Where does that start? And it starts pretty much with the mayor, but it also, it continues with you guys on council. And I think one of the first places you gotta look is, Mr. Katalowski, I think you're great. You know, you've done a lot for the city. You're always providing information on what people are. You make more than the mayor. And that's common, that's public knowledge. I mean, there are people around here like me, working part-time, and other people a lot worse off than me. You know, we're struggling to put food on the table, pay their taxes. Let's look at the facts. And I'll try to cut this down, but I mean, I'm just using you as an example, sorry. I mean, there are other, you know, there are other people here, like Mr. Henry and Mr. Moses, I think are closely overpaid. And I'm sorry, Chief, but I think you fall in that category too. I mean, compared with Scranton, I, I don't, I think, and how about your council members? You're earning thirteen thousand plus, or something, maybe it's eleven thousand. Plus full healthcare benefits? I guess you didn't take a vow to cut your own salaries or your own health benefits. I gotta give it to Mr. Brown. He rejected his health benefits. That's great. I think more people should follow that example. You're still paying out salaries and pension, not salaries, sorry, pensions and health benefits to ex-mayors, ex-public officials. This is one starting point to stop reckless spending. There should be, in the time remaining, I have a lot of other proposals. I want to follow up on Mr. Walsh, Moss's point about the increase in the time for public input should be increased at least seven minutes. And this council should commit itself to listening to what people have to say. I don't mean just complaints about lack of a stop sign or red line or dilapidated property. I mean suggestions in how this city could be put back on the right track. I think it goes beyond, it goes beyond forming neighborhood associations. That's a good idea, but there's a lot more. Because for the last twelve years, these people, myself, Mr. Sorek, everybody else, we have been shut out of public government. It's time now for the public to get involved and it's time now for you people to listen to our suggestions.
That being said.
Do you want to make a comment now or do you want to be talked afterwards? I'll give a comment now. So you want to know what my priorities are?
Yeah, it'd be nice if I were three.
So I have four priorities. If you ask for three, three deal with inside city hall and one would deal outside of city hall. And mine are, any way possible, every initiative we can to expand the tax base. So it's all about economic development jobs and how I can help sell this city, entice people to have businesses here, open up, expanding the tax base. Number two, aesthetics. Last night at the meeting we had at Rowan Mill Hill, we all talked about the streets, the street signs, how way things look, potholes, lines in the middle of the streets, so aesthetical things and how, and how we look. And I believe when we look good, we feel good also about ourselves. And three, I mentioned it before, wholesale review of every ordinance on our books. What works, what doesn't work, if it's outdated, what needs to be tweaked, and what do we keep. And then the fourth one outside is these neighborhood associations, these residence groups. Because these are a way that the city can interact with a large amount of people. And to me, I find it was sad that there hasn't been a neighborhood groups, resident groups in twelve, in the twelve neighborhoods. There are crime watch groups, there might be senior citizens groups, but really neighborhood groups that come together and say, this is what we want in our neighborhood. And that's what I'm doing on the side in the role of a councilman. So there's my agenda.
Thank you. Okay, that being nothing more on council, I'm most of you there. Eric, thank you.